Good evening, welcome and thank you for joining us for tonight's regular meeting of the Arinda City Council. Tonight is Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025, and this is our 7:00 PM regular meeting. Please be advised that there's assisted listening devices on the table in the back of the room for anyone who needs them. And our deputy clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Okay, Councilmember G here, Councilmember Hoxey.
Here.
Councilmember Riley.
Here.
Mayor Malkani.
Here.
And note for the record that Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Iverson is has an excused absence this evening.
Would everyone please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. That brings us to Item C, adoption of our agenda. And Madam City Manager, do I understand we have a change?
We do, Mayor and Councilmembers. We are going to request that Item D1 be moved to the next meeting so that we can bring hopefully more folks out for that event.
Wonderful. And so with that change of moving Item D1 to our December 16th meeting, do I have a motion to adjop the addenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. That brings us to public forum. The public forum provides an opportunity for members of the public to speak on any item within the jurisdiction of the city council that is not on the agenda. Additionally, a speaker has the option of addressing the council on an item listed on the agenda if the speaker will not be present when that agenda item is taken up. And I do not have any speaker cards, and I do not see any members of the public here, but to be certain, I will just ask if there's anyone who wants to speak during the public forum section of the agenda. Seeing none, I will close public forum, and that takes us to Item F, our consent calendar. We simply have Items F1, our minutes. Are there, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. We have no public hearing tonight, so that takes us to Item H, policy matters. And Item H1 is a community park master plan and improvements update, CIP project number 4112. And I believe we have a staff presentation on this.
Mayor, members of the council, Scott Christie, our Parks Director is going to do this presentation, and of course, Parks Director Todd Trimble is also here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Director Christie.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you. And I do want to acknowledge a lot of help we received from the Parks and Rec Department in researching the various options for the park, and of course, all the background work to date that they've done on the project. And I appreciate Todd being here to help add in his expertise in the subject matter. And the presentation here is pretty brief. It just goes through some of the options we've looked at, covers some of the background. Most recently, City Council directed us to look at some of the estimates we've provided previously. In April 2005, we did discuss the entire master plan and a conceptual estimate that Calendar Associates had prepared. And it included quite a few elements of the park. Certainly, we establish some priorities based on council guidance to stress the importance of improving the accessibility, and then to look at some of the other important elements such as the playground equipment upgrades, consideration of a band shell, and then other improvements in the park. And as a result, we did look further into this. We evaluated the estimate and some of the options. We looked at the accessibility more closely, and we came up with an alternative plan. Now, this is somewhat hard to see, I realize, but it does show the overall layout where in the rear of the park, you have the youth play area that's aged five to 12. And then to the right of that, you have the amphitheater that's used by the Starlight Village players. To the right of that, you have what we currently call the kinder gym, then the general grass park area, and then at the kind of edge of the lawn area is the gazebo that we used as kind of a makeshift picnic area, but we also use that for various performances in the park. It has limitations, of course, because it's relatively small. It's, I think it's served its, it's kind of at the end of its service life, so to speak. Then near the front of the park, as you're on the Arinda Way side, in about the center, kind of between where the tennis courts are and the grass field, you have kind of the main entrance, which is steps that go up to the park from that location. Now, this is where the original estimate from Calendar had proposed making the accessible entrance. So in place of the stairs, you would have a switchback arrangement with ramps that, again, with accessibility requirements, you're limited to about a 5% slope, so you have to go up and back away. So it takes a fair amount of real estate. And then with that, another key element with accessibility is providing disabled parking. In this case, a minimum of one space is required. So to do that, we would have to rearrange the diagonal parking on Arinda Way to allow for what turned out to be the most feasible option would be to have a parking space, a parallel parking space. So you end up taking about three parking spaces, building a curb ramp, and then the user could use that to get up to the park through this ramp switchback system. And with that, they also proposed a pergola to kind of designate that as the entrance. In any case, then, just kind of rounding out the elements of the park, to the front right of that entrance is where the tot play area is, aged two to four. And then to the far left, to the left of the tennis courts in the corner, is where a exercise area was proposed for that space. And the other notable spot I should mention is back by the youth play area. That's a spot where we envision creating some additional picnic areas. So moving on from that, then, the accessibility that we explored and pretty well determined is the best approach is rather than have the access at the front from Arinda Way, we would have it be at the location to the edge of the park on the right. And I should probably go back to the last slide. That would be up by the kinder gym area, if you can see where that is, where the driveway goes up to the back to the community center building and then that kinder gym. That is what this depicts. Again, this is more of an engineering drawing showing the slopes, how you would have, in this case, you'd have two parking spots, because we'd have one for the park, and then we'd have one that would be an improved, more compliant disabled parking spot for the community center. So it would actually serve two purposes, both the park and its associated restroom, and then also the community center. So to do that, we'd have to do a fair amount of grading to create a relatively level surface for those parking spots. And then by that point, you really don't have too much of an issue with getting to the restroom. So you would be able to get up to the restroom without a significant retaining wall or features like that. And we'd have to do a few other improvements to allow walkway on the, I'll call it the left-hand upper side of the drawing by the driveway entrance. So all told, you'd have a, we believe, a more usable, accessible entrance. In the end, it would be slightly, we would save some money over the other option because we don't have, of course, the switchback ramp. We don't have to have special retaining walls by the restroom to make that access. We would not have the pergola, and we'd have two spots rather than one and solve pretty much a separate problem with the non-conforming access that we now have with the community center. So we do believe this is a preferred option for the access. Another key is the restroom. The original plan showed for a remodel of the restroom building and expanding from the two bathroom spots to a third one. So it requires significant remodel. We have proposed simply upgrading the bathroom with compliant fixtures, adding a water fountain to the exterior. And with that, we can save a significant amount of money. So we're showing $25,000 in this case for that purpose. And then the construction and design would be added to that, and we're proposing to get that done by June 1st. Again, that was considered the priority item to improve the access, and we would cover that within the existing budget for this project we now have approved in the CIP 4112. Then the next step, and again, our intent here, as you probably have seen from the staff report, is to end up with four capital projects. So the second one would be the next priority being the playground replacements. The existing playground equipment, we believe, is on the order of 25 years old. It has been regularly inspected for compliance as required, but it is aged. They're outdated. It's not too fancy at this point compared to some of the alternatives. We did have onsite meetings and reviews by two well-established playground equipment manufacturers, got some ideas, and updated cost estimates from them. And that's presented in the cost estimate. We would obtain community input by using Parks and Rec. They would use some various designs and gain the input with some web-based queries and things like that. The other thing we're doing in this case is we're proposing a pour-in-place type resilient surfacing, as opposed to what's out there now, which is more the wood fiber. And actually, that's what the original cost estimate that we provided in April included was wood fiber. So we've upgraded that after discussions and determining that really is a preferred and necessary surface to modernize the playground area. And the intent would be to combine the playground areas, so we now have both the tot and the youth level in the same general location near the front of the park. One advantage to doing that, well, there's several, but one advantage is then we can do this playground upgrade while we still at least retain the youth playground until it's complete. So we do have that advantage. These are just, in your staff report, we have several various depictions that we obtained from the manufacturers. This is one that just kind of gives you idea of, you know, it's more than just swings and so forth nowadays that are available. Here's another option. There's various ones, and again, we'd want to get some community input before we move forward with that. And of course, there are various grant programs and state-type grants that the manufacturers have available, and there may be other grant sources, and we'd take full advantage of those that we can. Then the third phase, the third project would be the band shell and picnic areas to replace the gazebo. There's prefabricated band shells available. We could do it other ways. I mean, in any case, for these other phases, we'd need to hire or use the existing landscape architect, Calendar Associates, to do the design work for each phase. And based on what they find, you know, we may find that the prefabricated band shell is the most effective way to go. But in theory, they could design it in another means. And then we'd also, as I mentioned earlier, we'd expand that back picnic area or expand it where the youth play area is now to be a more, bigger picnic area where we believe we could get additional revenue to help pay for that with that expansion. And these are a few depictions. There's more in your packet, but these are two that Todd believed would be effective for that space. And as you can see, there's more than just the band shell itself. There's the various grading and retaining wall and platform and foundation that you'd have to do as part of the improvement. Then the last phase, Phase 4, would be the other park areas and certainly the pathways, although we believe they're serviceable now, the asphalt pathways. They need some improvement and resurfacing in various locations. We could improve the pathway lighting. We could improve, change out some of the landscaping. We could include that exercise area that I mentioned earlier to the west side of the tennis court, so to speak. So there's a lot of things you can do that are, they're further out there, so they're less well-defined. You know, we put a number in the estimate just for talking purposes, but you know, that could vary greatly depending on what extent we'd want to make those improvements. So in summary, these are the four divisions that we're proposing, the four projects. We would come back to council with the budget update to more accurately project what those projects are. In the meantime, we propose continuing on with the accessibility plan, getting that built, upgrading the restroom, and completing this first phase. Comparison of the estimate that we presented before, there's quite a bit of contingency in both that prior estimate and our current one. So we believe we have a better option with what we presented today with things like a better accessibility plan that serves both the park and the community building, and improved surfacing for the play area. We've upgraded our cost estimates, so we're pretty close to what was estimated before, but we believe that this is a pretty accurate number now. Restroom, as you can see, there's a big difference there because we've scaled back the scope of that quite a bit. The rest of the park, we're pretty close because that can be altered significantly if desired. And again, at the bottom, we have a pretty large contingency due to the, it is just a rough estimate now for the overall project. So that pretty well covers the basics. And the only other costs that aren't necessarily included, I mean, they are certainly in this accessibility part, the design and the construction management, but for the later phases, we didn't put that in just yet. That may be covered in the contingency, but just to be fair, it's not specifically included in that number. And again, we would require the services of a landscape architect for most of these phases. So that concludes what I have to say. I'm sure Todd could add more. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Great. Thank you, Director Christie. Director Trimble, is there anything you wanted to add?
No, not at this time.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
Council questions? Go ahead. Councilmember G. Councilmember G.
Thank you, guys. I'm just curious, what is the material for the playground surface? It looks like it's that sort of rubbery. Is that what it is?
It is. It's a poured-in-place resilient surface. If you've seen the, let's see, the Arinda Pine Grove area where that playground is.
Pine Grove, yeah.
Pine Grove. That has that surface. It's basically poured rubber, but with a, you know, resilient interior and then a kind of a rubber exterior. It's not inexpensive, but it works well, and it does require maintenance, you know, over time.
Okay. Councilmember Riley?
Can I follow up on that? I'd like to follow up on that.
Sure.
What is it, what is its service life? How long do you expect it to last, this poured-in product?
Can you recall? I know that the Pine Grove product has been there for 10 years with very little impact. It's a smaller space over there, but it is heavily used by the housing and the people who are using the park. I think, like Scott said, I think, I don't know what specific warranty would be, but at other agencies, I've seen that product in use for more than 10 years easily. But it is, you know, does, it's not, obviously doesn't typically have to be replenished like the engineered wood fiber.
Director Trimble, I'm sorry, if you could just come up to the microphone.
It doesn't have to be replenished as often or ever apparent, you know, obviously is the engineered wood fiber that we have now at our other three tot lots, which is ADA compliant, but it's not an easy material to move around in, so to speak. So this would be much, much more effective in that way in allowing compliant access. It's pretty sturdy nowadays.
I guess I'd like to ask the manufacturer, whoever we work with, what is the likely life? And then more about what's in this rubberized product? Like, are there, you know, little microplastics, or what is this stuff? And then if you're going to use that, and it's supposed to be for, you know, accessibility, then in terms of choosing what structures we have, it'd be great to have something that was appealing and useful for someone who had an accessibility issue.
Right.
Is that in that, is that in any of the drawings or thoughts?
It should be. There's examples in the drawings, but that is certainly an intent is to have the terms, you know, universal, all abilities type of facility is what we're looking for, at least with, you know, a number of different elements that are available for people that need, you know, that have access issues, wheelchairs. Like I said, the engineered wood fiber that we have in most of our facilities is considered ADA compliant, but if you've ever even tried to push a stroller, let alone a wheelchair through that, it's much more difficult.
Right, right. Okay, good. All right. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Hoxey?
Are you going to involve any parents of children with disabilities in sort of figuring out equipment, or, you know, how are you planning to get input on picking the correct equipment?
We do that now routinely. We haven't made an announcement, but we recently did ask, per request from a community member, to replace one of our existing swings with a, you know, an ADA compliant swing, which we've had in the past. So we have, like Scott said, we intend to pick some elements where there's options, maybe two or three options that can be selected via any number of methods of surveying, but we do work, and we'll work with the designer. We already have, to the extent of adding a number of elements for that. It's not a universal park. Everybody has different feelings, but in our, we're thinking of a park that, not necessarily that every child can use every piece of equipment, but it's an area where every child has, you know, an opportunity, something to use.
And are you thinking about widening the pathways? I know we have seniors walking on the pathways. We have children riding tricycles on the pathways.
The pathways are indeed very, very busy. It is one of the few, as we've talked about before, flat areas in town, and a lot of bike riding is learned there, and a lot of residents from the senior villages use that every day. So we feel the path, the width are probably sufficient. And Scott mentioned some of the, it is mostly asphalt surfacing, so it's had, we've done some repairs over the years and renovations, but that's one of the things I think that we talked about kind of later on, and see kind of how much we want to pursue that. There's options we have there.
And is reseeding the grass in the center part of the project, and is that later or earlier?
It's an option still. We don't think, at least at this point, the existing irrigation and turf is in good shape. It doesn't get a ton of heavy use. It usually will look its worst after 4th of July, but then it bounces back relatively quickly, but it's still an option to consider if we feel it necessary.
And are you considering shade on the playground areas? I think it's important to make sure there's shade, not just for the kids on the playgrounds, but for the parents watching the kids.
That's a good question. That's probably one of the biggest comments we get. I remember growing up with no shade in the metal slides and stuff, and it's not even considered anymore. So absolutely. So we're planning on retaining a lot of the trees along Arinda Way that currently provide shade if we can. And then we proposed all the elements, all the major elements have, typically will have a specific shade structure over it, whether it's a tower or a slide or some other aspect, and then potentially some, either some pergola arbor type of things in the seeding areas if they're not already shaded by the existing trees.
Yeah, I'd like you to consider shade areas for the parents, grandparents, friends watching the children, because nannies can get quite hot. Other questions? Yeah, Councilmember Riley. Can you point out exactly, or describe better to me where the two parking places are?
Yeah, that's good.
I couldn't tell from that drawing, and the print is so small, I can't see it.
Can we have the, I'll kind of show you, Scott could use the.
Rectangles next to the building?
Yeah, it's on there somewhere.
Or are they near the bathroom, or are they up against the community center?
It's a good question. It is difficult to see, so if we'll put that master plan picture back up, and we could use the pointer to show you.
Yeah, yeah.
They're like in front of the kinder gym, is what I'm going to describe.
But you could kind of show.
Or you can just walk up to, point to me.
I'll do that, and then.
Very, very quick.
Oops.
There you go.
Think I went too far now?
Next one. There you, right, right.
Here, so the vehicle would enter here, and the parking space, the two ADA spaces would be here.
Oh.
And some of the, this area would be cut a little bit, so.
Okay.
Access, maybe they access to the restroom.
Okay.
And there'll be separation in the walking path versus the driveway.
Okay. Can you go to the next drawing and tell me what the, see the two rectangles that are next to the community center? Oh.
So here's the driveway that comes in.
Okay. Is there?
Here's the driveway that comes in.
Hold on, I just realized, we may have folks watching from home, and they can't capture this. Do you want to take a microphone and?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's a little bit in a different configuration from the master plan. This is, this is the driveway coming up. Here's the kinder gym right here. Here's the existing play area, and the pathway kind of goes here. Here's the meadow. The restroom building is right in here. So you come up the driveway, like some of you may have in the past, to park up next to the community center building. In this case, you would go straight in, and there's your one ADA space, another ADA space, the compliance space in between. This is the existing kinder gym building with the mural on it right here.
Okay.
And then there's.
So just so that we have kind of, in case anyone is watching, on the accessibility plan, the area where the parking space is going to be proposed is sort of in that gray, lighter gray shaded area in the middle of this picture diagram. Is that correct?
That's correct. There you go. The darker spaces, the, you know, improvements to the pathway, the existing pathway.
So you're keeping the existing two spots, so they'll be at four, you know, up there.
There'll be.
There's two next to the community center, and we're not losing those.
Those wouldn't necessarily be ADA, but just usable spaces.
Right, but you could use it, right?
Yes.
Okay. My next question is about the band shell, and just the thought, have we, does our designer have, like, access to someone who has sound engineering experience to know whether or not it's, your sound is going to be better for a performance if there's a wall behind you, or if it's better without a wall behind you? or if it's better without a wall behind you? I think we need that expertise.
Right. Now, those are factors that we've looked at and that's from experience and discussions with other agencies that have these types of facilities. It definitely is a benefit to have that behind us. We didn't feel that it would make, if you've ever been out there for the concerts, sometimes of the year, the sun is coming down just at that point when for maybe half hour or so where it does kind of shine into the existing gazebo, which is where basically the new band shell would go. We didn't feel it necessarily try to move, totally reconfigure the park. So we still think it's the best location because it's facing the biggest area of lawn area and it spreads out kind of in the center there. But absolutely, the space behind it is helpful in not only keeping the sound from, you know, focused out, but also preventing the view from behind, which would be the amphitheater, allowing other activities to take place behind before they came out.
Last question.
No, take your time.
Has any thought been put into creating a wall or a patio to, for fundraising purposes? So like you sell a brick or a wall that has names or something?
We could certainly add that. Yeah, we haven't really gotten to that point, but that's a great idea. There'd be space out there for that.
Somewhere, maybe near the picnic tables.
I mean, there's different options for that. When I researched, we've seen. One of the things that we've got a lot of requests for, and you know it's not there now, but on the, along the pathway where the main play area, the youth, the tot play area, is we've gotten a lot of requests for that area to be fenced in, the future tot and youth play area to be fenced almost entirely in. That's why if you ever go out there, you'll see a lot of dummies and groups on the tennis courts because I think they like, which is not allowed, but they, you know, they're enclosed and that type of thing. So we've seen that throughout our research and our travels. And depending on the type of fencing you use, for example, I've seen a lot of the Trex artificial wood fence posts and stakes along there. And those have been used for the dedications with names on all those. So there's a variety of options for that. But the fencing areas, one of the biggest requests that we got to have the, that new combined play area enclosed to an extent.
Is that in the budget or in the estimate? Thank you.
Other questions? I had just a couple of the, first of all, the band shell option, since this is in front of us, this would, I assume, before we were making any final selection, would come back to the council?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. All design.
And in terms of getting community input, I wasn't clear on, and you know, it's fine if, this is still to be developed, but how was it envisioned that you would get community input at this point?
We've had, you know, different types of community input, you know, way back even prior to my time with community meetings and when the original master plan was approved. What we see moving forward, because we're comfortable with the basic layout and, you know, the transition from the existing gazebo, which now serves as Scott mentioned, a kind of a modest picnic area and the concert stage. And we feel that this, you know, obviously we'd be losing the picnic area there. But like he'd indicated, we would have an opportunity for a larger, more expansive picnic area just to the side of it, which would be very beneficial. But what we're looking at in terms of the community input probably would focus around the play structures, the types of ADA apparatus where there's several options. And we could maybe, you know, give two or three examples and ask for feedback from the community. We can get into the color of the resilient surfacing and the different patterns that it's, you can do, things like that. We weren't necessarily looking for, you know, feedback to design the entire park at this time because we're--
I guess I would say mechanisms, like do you--
Oh.
I mean, obviously we have the Parks and Rec Commission.
Right.
What, like for example, with the Pilot Dog Park, we sent out that survey, right? And we got a lot of good feedback.
We would envision something like that. Surveys via social media and those types of things that could have the visual aspect to it.
Another question I had was about the landscaping and the budget. The cost estimate included, I think was the revised estimate was about $1 million, which was for the rest of park, pathways, lighting and landscaping. Was that landscaping including just plants and sort of irrigation? Or what did that include? And I'll tell you what I'm asking is that I have just been so, so, so overwhelmingly happy when the Garden Club has partnered with the city and made recommendations for landscaping. I'm looking at Councilmember Riley because she's had a lot of involvement with them. And, you know, and I also got the sense, maybe it's wrong, that doing so was certainly more budgetary friendly because we are essentially getting the benefit of some amazing volunteers for design. So I don't know if that's something that would, if we were to incorporate the Garden Club and I've always been looking for this, you know, fire savvy landscape demo garden somewhere in our town. So if we were re-landscaping, I would love to see something like that. So I'm wondering if that would alter that million dollar cost at all.
I don't think we've gone to that point yet. I mean, there's some nominal amount in the original estimate from calendar that has maybe, I was just briefly looking at it here, maybe 10 trees, a redo of the turf and some stuff like that and some irrigation upgrades. But again, theirs was sort of a conceptual level estimate. That wasn't necessarily the focus. Again, that's why when we get into that phase, we can explore a little more about what we want. And it could alter the figure to whatever extent we need to, depending on what we want to end up with.
Okay, fair enough. Guess I have another question. Sure. We're talking about four phases and I'm wondering if there's a way to, or was thought also put, did you also put thought into making it three phases, expediting it a tiny bit, given how long things take? Is there a way to, you know--
I think you have to do the playground next, just so that things can move forward. And then presumably your third and fourth phase could probably move together.
Yes.
That's what I'm kind of hoping, or maybe some of the third can be part of the second or--
The first phase we're doing because we have an approved CIP and we've got a plan. Obviously, we're going to have the council authorize the contract for the improvements for accessibility. But those are things that we just simply must do for this park. We don't really have many options there. And then the playground equipment is where we could get some significant community input on, make those decisions, and then we could move towards as quickly as the council would want to move towards implementing three and four after phase two gets done. Because really what we're trying to do is minimize the disruption of the use of the park by leaving some play structure equipment there while we're working on developing out the playground area in expanded way. And then we can move to three and four at the same time, if that's the desire of the council.
Thank you.
One additional very quick question, I hope. The, will moving the playground with the redesigned revised proposal, will that significantly change the amount of sort of lawn area that currently exists?
Go ahead. We don't, that wasn't our intention. We, if you're familiar out there, the lawn is probably one of the most active areas, especially spring, summer and fall. Not just for 4th of July or concerts and, but just, you know, we run classes out there, summer camps, all those things. So that was our intent was to try, there's, to kind of keep the meadows, we call it, kind of intact as much as possible. But we do intend to utilize every space, available space. What would that be? To the west of the pathway by the play area. If you've been out there, you'll notice there was like, there's currently a mound with a few trees that we would take advantage of leveling and utilizing that space all the way around to where the tire swing is and maybe even a little bit further. So we're confident in kind of reconfiguring that whole area. We'll not only be able to include both, as Scott said, the tot, you know, the two to five age and the youth, the five to 12 age in one location, which is one of our biggest requests. But also keeping it enclosed and still not really impacting the existing pathway or the meadow.
Thank you. Any other questions before I call public comment? Councilmember Roxy?
I'm still worrying about the area for parents, grandparents, nannies to sit and watch their children. Are you going to be building tables and chairs and shade and sort of in between the two play areas for observation?
Yeah, absolutely. Not all the, some of the, maybe in your packets, some of the rendings might show that. If you're familiar with the location now, the space closest to the driveway, for example, that is kind of a flat area that has some tables and benches. We'd want to continue that or potentially even, as Scott alluded to, maybe a small reservable picnic area up there. But the design that we have from both vendors includes, and we've talked about that extensively with them on site, to take advantage and probably model the, some of the existing seating that currently exists along the Arinda Way fence, under the large trees, which is already in the natural shading, and then any other kind of accumulated seating space, which is definitely important for a space like that with those younger ages is, that's definitely one of our aspects to include and have some sort of shade element to it.
Have you thought about any sort of water play area there?
We've chosen not to consider that at this point. We also plan to, water play is difficult. We will also probably remove, and we don't want to say this too loud, we don't intend to have this existing sand feature. Sand and resilient surfacing does not mix. So we're confident that with the addition of, you know, all new apparatus and a variety of different, whether it's physical, musical, cognitive types of things that are available now, there's going to be plenty of stuff to keep them busy.
Any more questions? Okay, then I will call public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on item H1? Seeing none, having no speaker cards, I will close public comment and bring the item back to the council for discussion. And so I think we've received the report and now we are to provide feedback on phasing in particular and in general.
We definitely want to hear your feedback on our proposed phasing. Certainly, the thing that we haven't really talked about is money. And we, you know, between surpluses from previous years and current years, we could certainly pay for the improvements with that. So we do have money that's not separate from Measure R money. We have separate general fund reserves. We have other potential funding sources for certain portions of this. So we can also come back with a more detailed funding plan. But I think what we would need to do is really hone in on maybe three and four a little bit more and understand some feedback from the council on what you'd like to see. I think one and two largely, you know, we know what we need to do with one. We generally know that we need good community feedback on two. And then we'll present that back to the Parks Commission and to the council for decision-making on what to, what sort of playground equipment to purchase and the security fencing around the area. But that three and four is really the areas where we'd love to get some good feedback from the council relative to, you know, selection of any band shell amenity and anything that you'd like to see happen to the park more generally that either wasn't reflected on the original master plan or things that you would, from your experience, think would make it better than it is currently. So I think that's where we're looking for more feedback on those sections.
Okay, thank you. Who wants to chime in first? Councilmember Riley?
I'm very excited about this and I'm very excited about the concept of phasing. I want to see us do it in three years and not four. And maybe just with that approach, it ends up being four instead of five. I don't know. But I mean, I just feel like we should try to make it move a little bit faster. On the money score, I think you're going to be trying for grants, but I think we should try for community support. And we should think about a way to, part of the surveying and part of, you know, the community building. And we could do a fundraiser that, you know, the obvious one I mentioned earlier is the brick. Buy a brick, sell a brick and build a playground. And we'd put those somewhere. And the people who run that, I don't know if we want to get into the details, but I've been thinking about it. And the main foundation that we would use would be the Arinda Community Foundation. But then I'm not sure they have the volunteer power, so we would have to find others. Just like with the Light Up Arinda model, two people took it on and then they got the community foundation to, you know, to take it on for the future. So we could find a couple volunteers maybe. Okay, and then what's missing in the design for me is a garden. The landscaping is broad, but I would like to see an intentional garden that maybe doesn't take up space, but is integrated in some other space, an existing space. Maybe there's a garden within the picnic tables that are making us 20, 30,000 a year. There could be a medicinal garden. There could be a fire savvy garden right there while you're eating and playing. You could be, you know, looking at plants that serve special purposes. Or there might be another space to put it, but that's just the one I came up with the top of my head that you integrated in the eating area.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else want to chime in with their feedback? Councilmember G?
I was gonna say, I like Councilmember Riley's ideas all around. And I do like the idea of trying to speed it up, mostly because I think that we need to make this a pretty high priority because it is well-used. And I think if it was even in, you know, upgraded a bit more, maybe, you know, it ties in with other things, right? The library, farmer's market, the food trucks. I mean, I think it really, we need to try hard to make it something that'll expand some of the rest of what we're doing as a community. And I don't have any ideas of anything in particular that's missing, but I think if it was upgraded, especially the playground area, you know, and just, you know, overall made to look, you know, as nice as possible. I like, you know, I like the idea of the garden and so. But I do think it should be a kind of a top priority in our overall scheme for the community.
I agree.
Roxy? I mean, I think it's wonderful and we need to do it. I think making the playgrounds ADA accessible and something that all our children can use in the community is really important. I think that shade is very important, given how warm it can get in the summer for everybody who's out there. I think making those paths really well-marked so that the tricycles and seniors don't run into each other is important. I'd like to see the meadow area improved some. Last time I was out there, it seemed like there were a lot of waviness to it. And I don't know, it seemed like it could be in a little better condition. And I know we use it a lot for concerts in the park and the 4th of July, but I also see kids running and playing and we don't want their ankles to turn and all that stuff too. I think it's really important that we upgrade this as a centerpiece of sort of our downtown for the community. We're a family-oriented community. I think it's a top priority as well.
I concur with everything that's been said. I, shade is really important. I do think that doing this sort of as quickly as our resources and staffing allows, I would agree with. I think our community would be receptive to it. Obviously, we have to break it down over at least a couple of years, but beyond that, as soon as we can get it done, I would say would be great. In terms of community input, I do, I do think it's really important to sort of replicate what has worked. I think we got some really good feedback from the Pilot Project Dog Park. And so that seemed to work. The first community forum we did where we mailed something to people's houses, that seems to actually work. So, you know, however we go about doing that, I think it would be helpful. I think we will, people will have ideas about whether the playground gets fenced in or not and, you know, whether there's-- not and, you know, whether there's seating in between and shade and things like that. So, and I think it will be important just with the paving to at least check in with Arinda Senior Village, because as Councilmember Roxy pointed out, a lot of seniors do walk in the park and use that area. The other notes I had, I also really, really like the idea of working with, well, I think working with the garden, Arinda Garden Club and having a garden. I'd love to see a fire savvy plants demo garden somewhere. And the only other thing is, I love the fundraising idea, but I think we do need volunteers to do it. And then the, with the materials, I also was sort of wondering what, I don't know what the latest and greatest is with playgrounds, because I don't design playgrounds. But the, what I would want to know is, the questions I would ask of a consultant is like, what are these materials? So I would be looking at safety, right? Obviously, physical safety of children and their caregivers. And, you know, environmental sustainability, right? So no microplastics, that kind of stuff. And also, I don't know if this location, we need, how much we need to think about fire resistant, but we are trying to incorporate that into everything we do. So those would be my fact, things to look at. And then the last thing is, to the extent we're trying to get reservations for the picnic area or improve the band shell, I, this comes much later, but it's just an opportunity for me to bring this up, so I'm going to. I think we need to really sort of revamp our music in the park program when we, once this is all done. I think that there are certain nights like La Marinda Idol and the opera that are really beloved, and I don't want to see those programs touched if they're really loved. But I, for one, can tell you, there's a lot of Arinda residents that go to Moraga for the concerts, the same night, so we have concerts in Arinda, right? And, you know, we, we've done a really poor job, in my opinion, not a poor job, I don't want, we, we need to do better, we can do better at coordinating with Moraga and at making sure that we don't compete with them. I know we try to coordinate this with the food trucks, but then everything, we just need to have our concerts not in competition, because it's, it's better for all of La Marinda if they're not, and to bring in bands that, you know, that Moraga's getting folks to go to theirs, you know, Fourth Board gets people to go there. So some of those bands I'm sure we could attract, especially with a new band shell. That's my feedback.
Could I ask one more question that just has come to me as we're sitting here? And that's about dogs. I, I don't know, I know a lot of people bring their dogs to the park. My recollection is those rubberized surfaces and dogs don't go together very well. And if you're going to put a fence, would you not allow dogs in the fenced area? I know a lot of toddlers are afraid of dogs. I don't know what you were thinking about dogs in the park.
Dogs are not allowed in the play areas anywhere. It's, it's not a big issue. Our biggest issues continue to be, you know, prohibited off leash use just within the park, typically early mornings when I'm getting there and chasing them off. So fortunately, we're, we're seeing, the community park is a very popular place for walking dogs, particularly senior village residents. And we see Pearl and Sharon every day and, and, you know, a number of dogs. But the fencing will certainly help, but dogs, you know, aren't, by munich code, aren't allowed in any player is, they're not allowed off leash in the park. So that's going to be our challenge to, to keep that going.
Thank you.
And the better concerts will start this summer.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember G?
I just have one last comment, and that is, there, there's some very nice images in here in the package tonight, because some of them are from the playground people and the examples or whatever. I, I know you've heard me say it before, but if we are going to hire someone again to help further with the, you know, design and the landscaping and the images and all that, I would really ask that there be, that they'd be able to do really good visuals so that the public see what it's going to look like and we can see what it's really going to look like. There's no excuse in today's world that whoever we hire can't do really top notch visuals.
Thank you. Any additional feedback? Okay. Thank you to staff. Thank you, Director Christie and Director Trimble, and I suspect our city engineer as well for all of your hard work on this. Okay, that brings us to council member reports. Item I.
Do I start?
Sure.
Okay. So we had a two by two meeting with the school district and we discussed e-bikes at the two by two meeting. And the school district had agreed that more education for both parents and riders is necessary, and they're going to partner with the city and working on what that looks like, trying to get that education program started. We talked about rider safety on the streets, getting to the schools, particularly OIS. And we talked about looking at that area where you cross to go onto Ivy Drive in the mornings and try to understand what we can do to make that safer for e-bike riders. We talked about the city sending information out to households regarding just what types of e-bikes there are, the pedal assist versus the level two versus the level three, and what ages are allowed to ride, which type of e-bike, particularly before Christmas, when we assume parents will be buying more e-bikes for their kids. And we understand it's an ongoing conversation that we need to continue to have, and the schools need to be our partner in trying to deal with it. I know that Menlo Park has just adopted some ordinances. I understand there are some trial community ordinances that the city manager could tell us more about, but it's, it's going to continue to grow as an issue that I think we're going to have to figure out together with the schools what we're going to do.
Can I ask a, just a follow up question about that?
Sure.
Lafayette Schools have adopted some education requirements, right? Was there any discussion about that? Is, are, is OUSD willing to do that?
No. But we did, we did have discussed that at this time. They don't feel that it's necessary, and there were descriptions of how that works in different places, but there's a staffing issue just with the whole regulation of it.
We talked about. I guess I, maybe we could, I know this is just council member reports, but maybe we could put that, well, I'll wait.
So we, we talked about how that worked in different communities. Superintendent discussed down in San Ramon, where her children go to school, they have an area that's enclosed, and if you want to park your e-bike in the locked enclosed area, you'll have to take some sort of class and have acceptance into that. But then she's just saying that people would just not do that and leave their e-bikes outside the enclosed area. So I, I think there's more discussion to be had on how that works. I don't have a sense right now of how many students are riding e-bikes to OIS. I, I, I don't know. City manager, did you have a better sense of that?
My notes from the meeting suggest that there's 20 to 30 bikes, e-bikes at OIS.
At OIS, okay. And elementary school children, do they ride e-bikes, do we know?
I think that's less.
I think the, the concern is largely the middle school aged riders.
And I, I know that in some communities, their, school districts have actually passed ordinances about not allowing them on campus and, and different things, but that's not something we've looked into at this point at all. I, I think it's, it's a conversation that's going to continue. And we're going to have to have multiple times and with, you know, a growing understanding of the risks and the rewards of e-bikes, right? And it's not just the risk to the riders, but the pedestrians and e-bikes don't mix well together. The middle school aged e-bike riders don't always follow all the traffic laws. They don't always wear their helmets. They don't, you know, there are all sorts of, they, they don't do that when they ride real, regular bikes either necessarily. And I guess right now in the state, you can't differentiate between an e-bike and a regular bike, so you can't ban one and not the other. So there's, I understand, and the city manager can help me out here, but I understand that there are some test communities that are looking in, trying out some different regulations.
There's a recent legislation that authorized Marin and San Diego to look at pilot programming, just to test that. And then the other thing just to note is that there is a piece of legislation that's been adopted that requires there to be some sort of study or analysis of the sort of adoption rate of e-bikes by riders. And so there's, we're working with Townsend on trying to put together a coalition letter on this issue. So there's something that we're working on, just so we can have our voice sacrificed too, as they look to establish more rules and regulations over e-bikes.
I mean, for me personally, I think there's a big difference between a pedal assisted e-bike where, you know, it just helps you go up the hill, but you have to pedal it versus a motorized e-bike with a throttle that goes 20 miles an hour and you can sit there without pedaling at all, which seems more like a moped or motorcycle.
Okay. So I think we're supposed to just get the reports now. I see our city attorney looking at us, so.
So I, I.
Thank you for.
I don't know if we need matters initiated on this, but it's going to be something we're going to continue to discuss.
Good. Anything else in the scope of council member reports? Yes, councilmember G?
I just wanted to ask a question about the two by two committee meeting. Was there any feedback about the crossing guards?
We, that was not on the agenda.
Anything else in terms of council member reports? Councilmember Riley?
I have a couple fun things to tell you about. I don't know if, not based on going to a committee meeting. Sleepy Hall Neighborhood Association is having festivities for the holidays next weekend, and it's become a more elaborate affair. And the highlight for me is going to be judging the dog costume contest.
Yay.
Now, the other thing I learned recently was that the Rinda Theater on the first Monday of the month has like $10 movies at 6:30, the first Monday of the month, of 50 movies you may not have seen, but should.
That sounds great.
And I guess the owner has written a book. He's a movie critic, and so this is, he's like taking the movies out of his book.
Anyone else with council member reports? I have a couple things. Otherwise, I'll chime in. This weekend, this coming weekend on the sixth, St. John's Church has their ribbon cutting and dinner for their new hall. And so we're going to be going and presenting them with a proclamation, thanks in large part to our city clerk who helped with that. We've had a lot of proclamations lately. We, the city manager and I were able to attend the Masonic Lodges 70th anniversary, and that was really a lovely event. And they expressed interest in working closely with, with the city and expressed interest about different projects that they might partner with us on, whether it was the parks or other things. And we, of course, have, I think the other things I would mention, this, I will let the city manager talk about, there's one other thing though, which is yesterday I attended the Cal Cities webinar on new legislation affecting cities. And so Cal Cities 2025 Legislative Platform is out and the slides from that presentation I received today. And so our city clerk is going to circulate them and share them with everyone. There were, there was a lot of legislation, as you all know, around wildfire and funding that's available. There was a lot of legislation around housing, you know, and a few other things. And if there's, are there any more council member reports? Otherwise, city manager?
Thank you, mayor and council members. Just a couple of updates. I don't know if it was said at the last one, but downtownarinda.com is officially launched. They are adding content to it. Sam, our intern, is doing a fantastic job of keeping the content up on events that are happening in the downtown area. We're also running a social media campaign to highlight small business. We're calling it the Small Business Spotlight during the holiday season, and this is to help to amplify the shop local dine local campaign that the Chamber is running. We have Winter Fest on Friday night, so we look forward to seeing you out at Winter Fest. The gingerbread contest starts at five. Festivities start at six. Is that accurate? Okay, it's on our website for more information. And as many of you know, Morrison Jewelers has decided to close shop and retire after a very, very long time in the community. We reached out to them, spoke to them today. They're planning to close in the spring, so we have several more months of having them in the community and have asked them to come attend a future meeting so that the council can thank them for their years of business service to the community. And we'll be working closely with the property owner to figure out how to re-tenant that space, so find out what ideas they may have and ideas we may have. So we'll share those. And I think, and then just a reminder that our next meeting, it's the reorganization meeting, and so the public is invited to come and celebrate with the transition for the next mayor for the upcoming year and have a little celebration with us at that meeting. So we'll see the public here on December 16th at seven.
Great, thank you. Do we, I didn't, that brings us to item K, which is matters initiated. Do we have any matters initiated tonight? I, I would like to bring up one, which is at some point I, I would like to be able to discuss e-bikes and specifically sort of whether the city wants to, you know, write a letter or take any action or make a proposal. Sort of working in collaboration with the school district, how we can work together to keep our students and our residents safer as they use e-bikes.
Any consensus from the council on?
So does anyone else want to hear this, see this on an agenda? And I don't.
So that sounds like a request, and then?
It is a request.
We're looking for a second?
I am.
Yeah, I'll second it. I think there's a lot of community members that are very concerned about it, and we know it's a tough issue. It's, it's tough to be everywhere and oversee, you know, what everyone in town is doing. But I, I, and I know that staff has some good ideas of things that are in the works, but I think it would be important to bring it so that we can have, you know, and hopefully get a lot of info out to the public to attend if they're interested.
Yeah. All right, so there's no discussion of a motion to place it on future agenda, but just a vote? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So that passes unanimously as a future matters initiated. Any other matters initiated? Okay, if none, then our regular meeting is adjourned. It is 8:10 PM and we will see you all at our next regular meeting on December 16th at 7:00 PM.